Good afternoon and welcome to the four o'clock work session of the Douglas County Commission. Today, we are getting an overview of the criminal justice system for Douglas County. Just a reminder, there is no action taken in our work sessions. This is for informational purposes only. We also don't take public comment during our work sessions. If you would like to provide public comments on any of the items shared this afternoon, you're welcome to join us at our 5:30 business meeting for the general public comment period. And with that, I'll turn it over to Sarah, who I think might introduce all of our guests.
Well, this is just the second in our series, and we might not get through the entire criminal justice system today, but we will talk about criminal justice services, our Department of Criminal Justice Services today. And I'm just going to turn it over to Pam to introduce her team.
Thank you, Sarah. Today I have with me Kay Fitzgerald, the CJCC Coordinator, Lee Haseman, my Assistant Director of Youth Programs, and Holly Myers, my Assistant Director of Adult Programs. And I sent you all a very brief kind of overview, just trying to give you a little summary of what it's all about. And so I thought we would, this would be more conversational. And feel free to ask questions as we go through it because there's a lot. And I think when Jean was out not too long ago, I think he had no idea the volume of things that we're doing out there. My department probably and my staff that it comes is about 55 people. For the county, 55 professional staff that work with our clients, we supervise anywhere between five and 700 people on any given day between all the various programs that we supervise. We also collaborate with a lot of community organizations. It's not just something we do in a vacuum all by ourselves. We collaborate with the public schools. We collaborate with Burton Nash. We collaborate with Arts Center, O'Connell Children's Shelter Building Peace, Lawrence Arts, and I think I said that University of Kansas. We do several projects with them with different studies that they're doing with us. We've, we've actually helped several people with their doctorate program, doing their studies with us. So I thought we would start with just what we do with adults and kind of from the beginning. I'm trying to think the least restricted stuff. So we have the Adult Services Program, which most of it came into fruition in about 2017. The first of which is our pre-trial program, which Holly supervises along with Shannon Young and I office. Pre-trial services are offered. Basically, we do a pre-trial assessment. The pre-trial team is about three officers who go out to the jail and interview clients. They review the information we get from the jail on each of those people that are being considered for pre-trial. And then they do a triple I background check to see if that person has any outstanding warrants, any outstanding holds, things like that that would preclude them from getting services. And then we submit once, and then throughout that morning, and this happens every day of the week, Monday through Friday, except for holidays, obviously. We get a list from the District Attorney's Office first thing in the morning of everybody who is brought in over the weekend on Monday that's still in jail that we need to consider. And that happens every single day of the week. We get a list in the morning and then throughout the day, we'll get feedback about who they're going to charge or who they're not going to charge. And then my staff put together a report for the court. And the report is basically information for the court to make the best decision they can with the information that we have. So it's criminal history, it's if they've had failure to appear from court because that's primarily the reason we want to make sure we're watching if they're not appearing before the court. And then we make, we have a praxis where we recommend what level of supervision that person should have based on the information that we currently have. Obviously, the decision of what level they get is up to the court. We don't make any decisions. We just tell them, here's the information we have. Here's what we think would best fit this person. We are on version, I believe, 19 of the praxis. So we have a stakeholder group reviews, and that includes a judge, the district attorney's staff, various other stakeholders. And we review the data from pre-trial, which we're just finishing up for 2024. And we'll bring that back to that group to see if there's any adjustments we need to make. So in the past, like what we've decided was, like, we used to authorize electronic monitoring house arrest for certain levels. We have reduced that because we don't think they need that much supervision. We're trying, we're trying not to over-supervise people and make them higher risk by supervising them endlessly when they don't need it. And keeping in mind, even though the reviewed at first appearance, they can still be re-reviewed at any point. So if you're not eligible because you have a hold from the Department of Corrections, or if you have other cases and other jurisdictions, that once those are finalized, you're eligible, you can still be reviewed. So we get reviews requests from the judges daily on clients that they want us to re-review that they have finally finalized or completed the things that they need to do for other courts. And then we submit a report to the court saying, here's what we know. And oftentimes, they want to know about living arrangements, especially if there are victims in the home, where are they going to live? That kind of thing. So in any given day, there's about 200 to 205 clients on pre-trial supervision, and they vary in the level of supervision that they have. Pre-trial staff communicate with their clients usually over telephone check-ins. And then they'll, they'll call them with reminders for court hearings to try and encourage them to be at court. And we, we always have maybe a really small handful of people who are on the highest level, which would be house arrest, where they're confined in the home for the purposes of supervision.
I got a question.
Yeah.
If you're reviewing somebody and they have no house, do you release them to?
We don't release anybody, but the court might release them to, we have lots of people who live out in camps. We have people who live at the homeless shelter, the community shelter. Lots of people are living with relatives or that kind of thing. A lot of times what house arrest is massively used for is if there's a victim that we need to keep them from having contact with. So typically, what you want to have electronic monitoring for is that you have exclusion and inclusion zones. So you don't want them around the victim's address or the victim's workplace so that we can monitor that and communicate with, with law enforcement if there are violations of that nature. And typically, the other reason we have electronic monitoring or house arrest would be for DUI cases where you have to serve so many hours in the house, and the monitors are so fancy that they actually can tell us every minute that the person's in the house. So we can only count the time when they're in the home. So if, so if you have a job, say, and you need to leave for that job, anytime you're at work does not count towards your DUI time, only the time you're in the residence. So we track that. And once they've completed the, usually it's about 2,000 plus hours that you have to be in the house to serve that time for the DUI. Then once they complete those hours, we will, we'll notice from the BI, the electronic monitoring company, that they've completed and then well, then the equipment gets removed and then they're done. So, and we notify the court when they've completed their, their time. So that's kind of just a quick overview of pre-trial supervision.
Pam, will you mention one more time about how many people you all are supervising on average on pre-trial? You said the number I just.
About 200 to 205, somewhere in there.
Okay, thank you.
It's kind of gone up and down, and I think you could see from, and that's just any given day, but you can see pre-trial without electronic monitoring on that. I sent you the, there's a chart, so you might take a look at it. But we're talking, you know, right under 500 in a year, but about 200 at any given time. So obviously, people come and go as, as their court cases are resolved, or or oftentimes, somebody's in compliance and they're doing everything they're supposed to, and the court may then remove the restrictions that they have for pre-trial. They may remove them from an electronic monitoring, or they may remove them from other restrictions like contact with previous victims and that kind of thing. So that's sort of a quickie overview, electronic monitoring. We do do electronic monitoring for the district court and for municipal court. Municipal court, the city of Lawrence reimburses us for the hours that their clients are on house arrest with our equipment and, or on electronic monitoring equipment. House arrest is kind of a weird thing. Really, it's electronic monitoring, and some people are restricted to the house. But we, we bill them about, I think, every quarter, and then they reimburse us for those. So I think they look at the financial need where we're really just trying to encourage people not to be in the jail. And I think it's helped keep the jail numbers down. I don't think it's the only thing. I think it's just one of the contributing factors of keeping the jail numbers down. Do you have anything you want to add about that? We also have an enhanced diversion program, something we created, actually, I think when District Attorney Valdez took office. It was waged basically for higher risk people who need diversion. Yes?
So as you're looking at keeping the jail numbers down, are you also seeing that you're having less repeat offenders as your individuals are kind of like rolling off or going through the trial? And then, you know, whatever.
I don't think we really look at recidivism.
Okay, you don't.
We're not really looking at, we're not, we don't provide treatment. We're just basically, our role is to try and get them to court.
Okay.
To comply with going to court. And once they do that, that's really what we're trying to accomplish. Because we're trying to keep them in the community and going to court.
Yeah, so that you keep them employed or keep their.
If they have.
If they're employed, our goal is keep them in the community where they have family ties and hopefully employment, and help them maintain their normal life.
Ameliorate their current condition.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because it's important to remember everyone pre-trial is presumed innocent. So it's.
There's no treatment aspect to it.
Right.
Okay.
Because this is all people awaiting trial.
Right. And, and there may be somebody who has a prior probation case. We have people on Community Corrections who are also on pre-trial because they have a new case. So, I mean, there's a multitude of reasons that you can be on pre-trial. It's kind of messy to explain because if you're not in the criminal justice system, you don't understand all those ins and outs. But the goal is to keep them out of the jail and keep them going to court and hopefully keep them in a normal supportive setting with family and jobs, et cetera. So their productive citizens while they're waiting.
Is anyone tracking recidivism then? Now, if we're going to talk about that further down than we can, I do want you to be able to finish what you're talking about.
Well, we do, we do do, Matt does a study of each of our various programs in terms of how we're doing. And we're trying to look at. So Matt's the data analyst for the county for criminal justice and other projects. Matt Cravens, Dr. Cravens, sorry. And he, we look at each of those programs because we're trying to make sure, and I think you're going to see this when we, when we finally put out the stuff for pre-trial, like, there's no racial bias or it's pretty even. I mean, if you look at the numbers, it's going to be, and it has been ever since we've started. We just try and make sure we're doing the least, least amount of supervision we can and keep people successful. So that's our goal is to not over-supervise somebody and hopefully keep them successful while they're still in the community. Maybe before pre-trial, the only way to get out of jail was cash. We're doing a lot more OR bonds.
And I think some of it is, let's like go back a little bit. We're putting them on the least amount of supervision that they need because that is what's best for the client. If, if, yeah, and the statute.
It's basically the risk needs principle. If you over-supervise a low-risk person, you'll make them higher risk. It's, you know, we do the same thing in Community Corrections, where you do a risk assessment on every client. We do the same thing on juveniles. We're basically singing the same, off the same sheet of music in every single action that we do in every part of our department. We look at risk and needs all the time and responses, and we try and look at how do we reward the behavior? We, basically, we try to reward the behavior we desire rather than using a big stick. And that seems to work really, really well. Our clients respond really well to incentives.
Wrong. Maybe Katie could talk just about, just briefly about data, how we're looking at the system as a whole and a little preview of the CJCC's strategic plan.
Yes. So the, over the last several years, I think that our local system has really made a lot of gains in how the different parts, different partners have been able to harness and kind of identify what data do they have? What's important for each of their touchpoints? We are through the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council. Part of that, they have gone through, they've been going through a period of developing strategic plan, and a big part of that is, has really been thinking about how the system from the very first touchpoint through calling dispatch all the way through sentencing. There's lots of data in between there. We're looking at some of it. And there's lots that we haven't been able to, we don't know. Do we have it? Do we not have it? Are we looking at it in the best way? How are we using it to tell, to better understand and kind of tell the story of Douglas County's District Court and also our municipal court in Lawrence? So that is going to be, hopefully, if this plan is adopted by the CJCC at their next meeting, that will be a big focus of their next probably year at least work. And understanding recidivism and how do we, how do we think about that? I think if we look at each of our district, or each of our distinct decision points, each of those would define that differently. And so what does that mean? Is it simply a new arrest? Is it, is it a new conviction? Is it a new conviction or arrest for a similar type of charge if they went through a specific treatment program? It's very, and in what time period? So it's, it can be defined differently, and that is probably, I anticipate that that, when we get to that phase of that kind of data strategy, that that would be, that's something that all of our partners are very interested in, recidivism in particular. But.
I think you'll see that the pre-trial data around rearrest is pretty low. It's actually quite low. So there aren't a lot of people committing new crimes while they're on pre-trial or in that pre-trial phase. I want to just briefly, yeah.
So like, one of the goals is failure to appear.
Right.
How can you give us a little bit of a history of, you know, have we reduced the number of failure to appears? Have they stayed steady?
This is one of the things that, one of the data points that we're struggling with. Because there really isn't any way to get that from the court in terms of what the actual failure to appear rate is. But we, we track our clients that go to court. So we could tell you on our pre-trial clients, but that doesn't give you an idea of what failure to appear across the spectrum is. That's just for people that are on pre-trial supervision, which is a very small picture of everybody in pre-trial status. So it doesn't really tell you that much. You can tell.
I would also add a depend, one of the things, the way that you guys are tracking that is generally after each court date, right? So did, did they appear for each court date that they had? Because then they're checking in with their officer. Generally, and this is not limited just to District Counties, or just to Douglas County's District Court software, but in general, one of the things that court, court management software struggles with is really capturing. So that rate is going to be different than what we see tracked in district courts data and what we see hitting the jail. Because a lot of times what those are tracking is, is the point at which a warrant was issued for that failure to appear. But that person could have missed 10 court hours. And we're only see, and no warrant was issued. But we're not necessarily tracking. That's not like an attendance record, you know, when we're in school. And it's different than what our pre-trial staff is able to do and track with their clients. So another, that's a, we have, we have looked at, and I can find this and give this to you if you're interested. We have looked at just kind of over time, have we seen a small reduction in length of stay around failure to appears and volume in the jail? It is, I feel like they both have reduced, and actual numbers, I can't give that to you right now. It's on the CJCC website and.
But there's no real definitive of what failure to appear is because it can take multiple failures to appear before you actually get something from the court says, well, we just got one on a youth, they missed court, they got an OR bond, so they're going to have to come before us for a minute to do the bond, and then they'll go back out. So it's just, it's really hard to define it and really hard to measure it. But we do measure it for our clients that we're supervising. I'll briefly talk about enhanced diversion, which we started in 2021. We currently have had like maybe a handful of people. It's really for high-risk, high-needs folks who do, who will not complete the diversion without some support. And I talked recently with District Attorney Loomis, and he's interested in continuing it, or at least getting it revamped up. And so we're going to look at that as, after he gets his feet under him on this new job, we'll be talking more about if that's something we want to continue or how we should, how it should look going forward. Then we have our specialty courts, the Behavioral Health Court and Drug Court. Behavioral Health Court's been, been around since 2017 with Drug Court starting in 2020. We see a lot of transition back and forth between the courts a little bit with, you know, it's kind of chicken and egg. Is it a mental health issue? Or is it a drug and alcohol issue? And, and so, so we do a RANT assessment, and there's some assessments that Burton Nash does and that DECA does to try and determine what's the best program. But we've had really good success on those programs, and we'll be evaluating the 2024 number, the 2024 numbers soon. Sorry.
RANT stands for Risk and Needs Trial.
Yeah, it's just a quick eight-question assessment so we can get a quick idea if this person's even appropriate. We actually flag people in the pre-trial report that we think might be a good candidate for a specialty court based on their history. So we try and give lots of opportunities for people, and we let them, and the attorney's going to look at that and see the flag, and the district attorney can see the flag. So we, we're trying to encourage folks to use those courts. I think the numbers look small, but over the year, I think BHC had 20, 45 clients over that year. And in 2024, Drug Court had 34. I mean, it's a fairly intensive program with phasing, and I'm happy to share more information if, if you're interested about how those phases work. It's the teams, the teams of those specialty courts drive what happens with those courts. We're currently in the process of doing a process evaluation of the specialty courts, and we're just in the throes of doing that. We don't have a report back yet, so we'll be looking, those teams will look at that report and see if they make, need to make adjustments on how they process the clients that are being considered for specialty courts.
What is the timeframe for that evaluation that might be a Katie?
They're in the midst of it. I think they just finished the big, I think they did the assessment piece, and now it's back with me.
I think initially when Pam and I worked on the, like worked with the timeline on the contract, I think we had through April 30th. If the, if they just finished, kind of the first big milestone is the teams do kind of an assessment of different questions that they were given. That helps inform the next phase, which is the evaluators doing interviews with each of the team members, focus groups, I think of participants is also part of that. And then there's a data component. We've, Pam's provided already a lot of the kind of administrative paperwork stuff about the programs for the evaluator. So I think they kind of had a jumpstart on that. The, some of the outcome data piece of that they will also be evaluating when they get that piece. So I think we're targeting probably end of April, I think, is when we would expect the teams at least to have gotten that back. And then we would be, after that, I'm sure, bringing it back before you will.
Then we have Adult Community Corrections, which has been around since 1987 in Douglas County. We receive KDOC Department of Corrections grants to help fund the Adult Community Corrections and the Juvenile Community Corrections. We have different grants for different things. Holly can probably talk to you a little bit more about it, but we have about 220, some client, active clients on any given day. They're currently, and I'll talk about this when I get to the important things to consider. But we do a lot of risk assessments and stuff. I will say one thing, the county supports greatly the Adult Community Corrections aspect of things. We have several staff. We do a lot of evidence-based programming. We do thinking for, well, we did think of our change. We do decision points. We do, what's the drug and alcohol, smart recovery. And we teach smart recovery at Community Corrections. We offer to clients there. They can also do it at the library. They also can do it at the jail.
Just to clarify, so these are folks that have been sentenced.
Correct.
In Community Corrections. They have.
They're moderate or high-risk people.
Yeah. So this is not pre-trial anymore, so we are more engaging with programming because they have been sentenced.
They're people that have committed a higher-level felony, and they are moderate to high risk. So somebody that, say, has done a misdemeanor or a low-level felony would go to court services.
And, and because they've been sentenced, normally, you know, they would be in a state prison. So the reason why, like, this is heavily subsidized by the state, actually. There's many people who argue the state should be paying the entire bill for Community Corrections. But it is a situation where we, because we are an arm of the state, the county is in charge of, of supervising Community Corrections. But if, if not for Community Corrections, these people would be in state prisons.
If convicted of a felony.
If convicted of a felony, right.
Misdemeanor convictions would result in potential where they might have an underlying sentence of Douglas County jail time, in which case that would be more of a direct impact on other resources and other parts of the system.
For us, though, we wouldn't supervise a misdemeanor unless if it was something that was additional to their felony so that the client wouldn't have to report to a court services officer and our person, they'd just kind of roll the misdemeanor into their, into, with us.
You might talk about supervision standards with KDOC and what the levels are.
Yes, we have four levels of supervision. So level one is the highest risk, and the standards are that you, we have to meet with them four times a month in person. You have to do a residence verification, or that's, send it better, and they have to bring it back. Or we go out to their house to make sure that that's where they live. Or, I don't know, they might talk to their officer like on Zoom, and, and the officer might say, go outside your house, point your phone at the house so that I can see the house number, so that I, you can say that's where you live. For level ones, we verify their residence once a month. We, we verify their employment. Once a month, they're, they're required to obtain and maintain employment. Level two, we have to see them three times a month. Some of the same things about verifying their employment and, and all of those kinds of things. Level three, which is moderate risk, we see them twice a month. And level four, which is low risk, which we have very few, we see them once a month. It is not, it's not common that we have people that are low risk. The only, the, the majority of folks that we have that would test out as low risk would be sex offenders. And the risk tools that we use don't measure a person's risk of sexual reoffense. They only miss, they only look at your risk of general reoffense. And so the standard is that if you're a sex offender, it is automatically overwritten so that we're supervising you at, at the high-risk level. Because a person that's a sex offender is going to, they're going to score low risk on our assessments.
How is it determined that folks that will spend their time in state prison versus folks that qualify for Community Corrections? If you're talking high-risk people?
The court, you know, that, that's what the court orders at sentencing.
You probably read that in the paper where they make an plea deal. And the deal is that they get probation versus prison time. You'll see them depart several times in the paper.
And the sentencing commission has a grid. Like, if you're this, then you get this, and they have, you know, presumptive probation. So if you've done, if you fit in certain categories, then the presumption would be you're going to get probation as a sentence. And then there is a border box, which at the court's discretion, it could go either way. And then there's presumptive prison. And even with cases that are presumptive prison, we could get them on probation because their attorney may file a departure motion and make an argument for why they can be served safely in the community. And, and if the judge goes with that order to depart, then, then we supervise them.
So I think I just need you to repeat what you said about the low risk and the sex offender? Did you say that a sex offender is a low risk? Or are you saying that they are?
They will.
That's how they score?
A sex offender is, is typically going to score on the, on the assessment, the risk assessments that we use. They're going to, they're going to score low risk because the tools that the Kansas Department of Correction uses are, are not developed to measure somebody's risk of specifically sexual reoffense. They measure your risk of committing another crime in general. And, and generally, folks that are sex offenders, that's the kind of crime they commit. They don't tend to commit like a bunch of all these other kinds of crimes. The risk is doing that kind of a crime again. And so because they know that, because they know that, that's, that information would be skewed, it's an automatic override. I mean, the standards require that if somebody's a sex offender, regardless of what they may have scored on the risk assessment, they have to be overridden to a higher level.
Okay, all right. So they're going to jump to a high?
Yes.
So they're going to jump to a number one?
The Kansas Department of Corrections determines how we score that, how that's going to be looked at. So.
Thank you.
Yep, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I think I was, yeah, thank you. I appreciate it.
People are reevaluated on the risk level every year.
Unless, unless they've had some really major change, which we do another assessment sooner, but it's, we're required to do another assessment every year.
On average, would you say you have a Community Corrections client, like for an individual, like length of time, term?
On the low end, I wouldn't, I can't give you an average. On the low end, it'd be 12 months. On the high end, we might have somebody for five years. It depends on the severity of what they've done. And it's also, it might not, the court might initially sentence a person for, to community corrections for a period of time. Then you have a probation violation, but the court doesn't want to revoke you and send you to prison. We kind of just want to tune some things up and whatever. So that the court is gonna, like, revoke and reinstate you, so the court may extend you for another period of time, so.
How often do you usually have a youth in your system?
Well, we'll talk about kids in a little bit.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so that kind of, and then some of the same services we do on the adult side, we do on the juvenile side, drug, drug and UA screens, assessments. We use electronic monitoring equipment for some community correction clients who the court has authorized us to use it because they need it for whatever various reasons. They do a lot of job bringings, both on the juvenile and the adult side. Then we have a couple of programs, we talked a little bit about house arrest, we use house arrest for municipal, district court juveniles and adults. So, and it's at no cost to the client, which is highly unusual. I don't think there's any other jurisdiction doing that, but it's all, it's been an awesome way to keep people from having to go to jail over just needing additional supervision. The other court, the other program that we do in combination with the City of Lawrence is community service work. The City of Lawrence helps pay for our community service work officer and support staff. And our staff go down to the municipal court every week and get the assignments for community service work. Those clients come in, and our community service work person helps them find locations to volunteer to work and track those hours and report to the district court and the municipal court when those hours are completed. And we do that for both adults and juveniles, for the city and for the county, both. And that's both, and the district attorney can also refer people for community service work hours as well.
Pam?
Yeah.
I just want to ask real quick, you said the city, and just want to clarify, you mean municipal, City of Lawrence Municipal Court only? Is that correct?
Baldwin and Yudora have never reached out requesting that.
Okay, just curious, thanks.
We would entertain it if they wanted it. Then we'll kind of move on to the juvenile programs. First and foremost, we have detention center that opened in nineteen ninety-two. We're a regional detention center, we serve northeast Kansas, and that's, I believe it's thirteen counties in the northeast. We're licensed for eighteen youth in detention ages ten to seventeen years of age. Right now, we actually serve most of the state of Kansas. We get referrals from all over Kansas for kiddos to come to, to the JDC. We do a lot of medication management. We have a nurse on, on, on contract that comes out three days a week to do medical screens for our day school students and for residents of the detention center. We get all the food during the week. Breakfast and lunch come from the school district, from Lawrence High School. The dinners come from the county jail. We don't have any cooking staff. That's just an agreement or arrangement we've had for a long time. So all the department had money for school lunch program goes to the school district. We have a full-time USD four-nine-seven teacher that teaches in the detention center with a para support. And the kids work basically, they communicate with whatever school they came from to try and work at the grade level they're currently working on. We just had a kid recently from Line County that graduated from high school, they were excited because they actually had no hope that he would ever graduate. But he was really motivated, and, you know, there's not much else, there's not much else to do in JDC, so working on schoolwork is probably a good thing to do. We've had a lot of success with that. I will say in the detention center, the detention staff don't only supervise kids in JDC. They also supervise all of our clients on house arrest in the evening and weekends. So they monitor all of the electronic monitoring. All the alerts that come in, and we get hundreds and, I mean, hundreds overnight. And so they'll, they'll notify law enforcement if somebody's in violation, if there's any concerns. One of the things we tried to do to expedite that, because it used to only do welfare check.
We're only monitoring, out in the community, we're only monitoring Douglas County kids, not
It's, it's for all the Douglas County people on electronic monitoring.
Right, so inside the facility, we may have kids from multiple counties, but outside the facility, your staff is just monitoring Douglas County kiddos?
No, they're monitoring everybody in Douglas County who's on electronic monitoring.
Right, oh, yeah, as well, yeah, overnights and weekends, right.
Overnights and weekends, and then they're also making all the calls to law enforcement. And anytime somebody's on electronic monitoring, that, that order is in the file and spilling. And so a law enforcement officer on the street can see that person's been ordered to house arrest and has a no-contact warrant, so they can arrest on sight versus what we used to do, which was a welfare check, which was not the best plan in terms of safety for the victim.
Which I think is just really, it's helpful because in essence, the staff is, you know, cross-trained to do a variety of different things. But the adult world and the, the, from the client's perspective, the adults and kids are always completely separate.
Yeah, the, the, the adults and the kids never cross paths, but the staff cross paths between them. So if we have a person who gets out of jail in the evening, and they're having problems with their equipment, they come out to the JDC, and the staff there will rework it or reconnect it if they need to, or replace it. They'll call the JDC staff if they have any problems with their equipment in the evenings, and if there's any alerts that somebody didn't do their breathalyzer or whatever, we'll contact them and say, we need you to do the breath test, stuff like that. And then they also do all of the drug drops, all the UAs for Drug Court and BHC on the weekends and evenings, because those are all random. And any given day, the whole group might come in on a Saturday to do a drug drop, and so the JDC staff make sure that happens. And they do all the paperwork involved with that, and they also help operate juvenile intake, which we'll talk about here a little bit.
Now, you said that you have referrals from other counties? So you have other juveniles from other counties that are coming to Douglas County to be housed, I guess?
They're, they're to be detained.
To be detained, for whatever periods of time? So do you then have shared cost, I guess, with other counties?
They pay us per diem rate
Do they?
For every day that their youth are in detention.
Okay, all right, how long are those kiddos typically here?
It varies, we have a young man that's been there over a year, and we have other kids who've been there a few weeks, sometimes it's a few days. It just, it really varies depending on the case of that kid.
Are they allowed visitors from, community members from their communities?
So they have, we have a level system within the facility, and those levels determine how much time they get in visitation. We, we do Zoom visits, we do in-person visits. They're, the higher level, the more time they get with family, and they can play games or whatever they want with them. We encourage visitation, they can call family five times a week. And they can visit, depending on their level. It determines how many times they can visit. And then we often, which we'll talk about, we have a grant, and part of the grant section, there's this new behavior health grant that's part of JDC that we get from the Department of Corrections. It's a requirement now that we have to provide mental health and drug, drug counseling for youth who need it, who are incarcerated. So we do what we call the GAINSS, which is
Gain short screen.
GAIN short screening, global assessment of individual needs. So every time a youth is detained, my staff in JDC do a GAIN assessment. Within the first seventy-two hours, it's required by law. Then that GAIN tells us if that person is, would benefit from behavioral health and/or drug and alcohol assistance. And so then we work with Bert Nash, and Lee can talk about that if you want.
I was just gonna, maybe before you do that, so
Sure.
On, just on average, Pam, or do you know how many juvenile detention centers there are in the state of Kansas? So, because that's the thing, there just aren't that many JDCs statewide.
I believe there's eleven. Yeah.
So that's why we all cooperate statewide.
And some of them, like Johnson, we do a lot of housing for over, overpopulation in Johnson County. When they have victims or kids involved in the same criminal behavior, they want them separated, so we'll house one of them for them. We do a lot of that. But some of the bigger ones, like Johnson, Wyandotte, and Cedric mostly only house youth from their jurisdiction. So we house from everywhere.
On average, I mean, most of the kiddos there are not Douglas County kiddos?
Right now, we have thirteen, and only one of them's from Douglas County, and she just got there today. She'll be out tomorrow.
Yes, did you have a question?
And, and that's different from the school program, which you'll have, you know,
We'll talk about that.
Douglas County youth coming in.
Yep, next up.
Yeah, so I think, just to continue on the GAIN assessment, so we partner with, with Bert Nash. And part of the, the statute is written that we have to do this GAIN assessment or an assessment within the first seventy-two hours of their admission. And then within forty-eight hours, we have to do a J, a case plan. So KDOC wrote in the case plan with, with the GAIN. When we do the assessment, it automatically, right, it just write, wrote it right in, so it was great for us. But, and then we forward that to Bert Nash, and they then determine the next course of action. They will do, they will follow up with an assessment at a later time. Now, there's not a timeframe on that, though. So, but we, you know, we've got our part done that we need to do. But they're, they're quick with responding, and so what they do is they come back in and they do an assessment for the, the mental health, and they also do an assessment for the substance use, if that youth, if it was recommended by the GAIN for the substance use. Then they provide a treatment plan to us, and then they will, then we follow that treatment plan with them.
The GAIN doesn't give a diagnosis. It's more of a tool to say that this is something that we need at least to be looked at. And in the mental health, it looks at internalizing disorders, which would be depression, anxiety, those kinds of things, or externalizing disorders like aggression, anger, management, those kinds of things. So the GAIN doesn't give a diagnosis, but it, it points that this is an area that we need to look Yes, that we need to have somebody take a better look at. And so that's what Bert Nash would do.
Yeah, we use the GAIN on both juveniles and the adult side. Because it's a nice, quick assessment to tell us that we need to look further, that person's background or what their needs might be. So the grant pays for the services we get from Bert Nash for, for those kiddos. So any counseling we can pay for from the grant. Then next up would be day school, we're licensed for forty youth in day school. The day school is by court order only, that's how it was set up. It started in nineteen ninety-eight, it's hard to believe it's that old. We started that because, it started because our detention center was overcrowded at the time, this is before reform happened. But we had determined that most of the youth that were in there were there for probation violations back in the day when that was allowed. And so we started the day school to try and support kids who are struggling in regular school, providing them with more behavior supports and more teaching support so that they could be successful and then transitioned back to public school. We currently have twenty-five youth assigned to day school. There's, I would say, mixed success with some attendants. Kids who are truant are still truant from day school. It's, it's just problematic, there's not a lot of teeth in it in terms of getting kids to come back to school. The school district struggled with it, we've struggled with it. It's been a great collaboration with USD four-nine-seven. That was something we met about back in nineteen eighty-eight for, like, three days and came up with this idea. And it started, we keep doing it. We've had lots of jurisdictions come out and try and replicate it because it really works keeping kids in the community, keeping them with their families, and providing them more supports. And we also have the counseling staff work with the kids in day school, there's school counselors that also come out and meet with them while they're in day school. We're really, our goal is they meet with the nurse if they need nursing services, we're trying to meet all the needs they might have that keep them from being in school or being successful. So the school district provides a teaching staff in day school, the para support, the teaching and academic materials. They have their own phone system, their own network. Get all of our food for breakfast and lunch from the district, the district provides all the transportation. So we oftentimes have youth from Baldwin and Yudora. The only difference would be that they're enrolled in Lawrence schools during that time, and Yudora and Baldwin are responsible for transporting their students to the day school if they're assigned by the court, and that's by court order. And that was designed that way, so it would become a dumping ground for every problematic kiddo. They have to go through the court process to actually come to day school. The biggest majority of the youth we send to day school currently are there for contempt of court for non-attendance. That is, would be the number one reason they're there. Do you have anything you want to add?
I was, I would just add to our, our JDC kids that are from the different jurisdictions, they're also, when they come in, they're enrolled in Lawrence High as well. Enroll them in that, in our district here, where they do their schoolwork.
And for academic purposes, you really can't tell a youth that's been in day school unless you know the names of the teachers. Because it, they're, if they graduate, which we've had numerous kids graduate from high school, their diploma still comes from the school of origin, so it would be Lawrence High or wherever. And for, for the purposes of academic, like, transcripts and stuff, you wouldn't know they were in day school, it doesn't say day school anywhere. So for the purposes of privacy, et cetera, I think it's kind of a win-win.
We have kids who age out of day school, so, you know, they're
Well, we've kept, we've kept youth after they're eighteen, as long as they're under the jurisdiction of the juvenile court or day school. But it's been fairly infrequently. We've had a number of kids leave day school to attend Peaslee GD completion, adult completion programs. So we try and encourage kids to, like, the academy and try and put them somewhere where they're going to be successful. Not necessarily always back where they started, just depends on what the kids' needs are. And we have this discovery program, which a lot of them are doing through this other regional grant that we do at Johnson County, and that it kind of exposes them to work and educational opportunities that they wouldn't otherwise know about. Then we have dual intake and assessment, which is basically law enforcement from the whole county bring youth to, to the intake and assessment center. We've operated since twenty seventeen, but it's been in the county for decades. Yeah, the eighties, I think. But any youth that has law enforcement contact, that law enforcement needs assistance with, they bring to intake. And then the intake staff or JDC staff will meet with the youth with the officer, and will decide what needs to happen next with the information that we gather from the officer and from the youth. So oftentimes, it will be, you know, and it can be anywhere from baby birth all the way to seventeen. So we've had lots of babies over the years, like, there may be some issues with family that we can place them with an aunt or a grandparent, or, so we try and really hard to look at relative placement first. Obviously, going home is another option, if, if the family will take them back. We also do police protective custody, where they're placed, we have two placements, we send a lot of the kids to the, to O'Connell here in town, takes youth, the teen youth. If we have younger siblings, we usually send them to the placement in, is it Windfield? Andover, Andover. So, and PPC, then, and DCF, and has seventy-two hours before they have a court hearing to decide what happens yet next on a police protective custody case. So we have the PPC or the child needed care kids, and then we have the offenders. And so typically, if a kid comes in for a low-level offense, they're not going to qualify for JDC. We, we can do a JDAI detention assessment instrument. Oftentimes, and I would say ninety-nine percent of the time, they're not going to qualify. But we'll put them, we'll process them, we'll do the booking process where we'll photograph fingerprint, do all the processing, and then put them back to intake and send them home. So that's kind of just, and we're talking hundreds of kids in a year that might come through intake for various many-sensory reasons. That we, we report to the court every time somebody comes in, and we get a monthly report about all the kids that came through and what they came through for, stuff like that. So then as part of, of intake and assessment, yeah.
You mentioned younger kids are going to Andover, what about our children's shelter here? So do we keep bed space or?
It's just for the ten apps.
Ten and up, go to
Younger kids, we really, there's some foster homes, we've worked with DECK on a few of those, it just depends on the availability. The one thing about, that we like about Andover is they won't separate siblings. So oftentimes, if you have brothers and sisters that are fairly young, they'll take them both, which is really helpful in terms of being, less traumatic, being separated.
And what age range are you talking about that go to Andover? Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, fortunately, that doesn't happen that often, so, at least in our minds. So then we have what we call an immediate intervention program, which would be another term for diversion, that's just the way the state liked to name it. We had, we've offered a hundred and four diversions since July first. So we primarily divert youth, we have very few kids on probation. As a part of our immediate intervention program, which is an agreement between us and the district attorney, and they can offer the IP pre-file or post-file, depending on the decision that the DA makes. These kids never go to court, and it's prescribed in law, in statute, what we're supposed to be able to do with those youth, which is pretty limited. What we do offer in our, in our jurisdiction, which is unique to anybody else, is we have an agreement with Building Peace here in town, and they work with kids on And they work with kids on, with the victim and/or neighborhood, um, what do they call it, neighborhood panel? Where they'll talk to them about your actions and then ramifications to your actions. So the kids, my frustration with the whole IP was the kids can't see that my actions had a consequence for someone else. And so working with Building Peace has been fantastic in terms of having kids work through, oh, what I did really impacted someone else. And so once they complete the building piece process with the staff at Building Peace, then their IP is closed. Because that ultimately is our goal, is just for them to understand the consequences of their own behavior. Two, we're also using Building Peace for kids who come to intake, who are in intake because of family conflict. And so we're working with them on doing some family conflict work. Because oftentimes those are things that could be resolved with some intense help from someone on the outside. It's been really, really, um, a rewarding project with Building Peace. We've, we've had really great results. Then we have conditions of release supervision, which is essentially another name for pre-trial. We can never name anything the same. But we supervise youth through a release from detention that the court orders for us to supervise on pre-trial supervision as a juvenile. And I don't know what the case load looks like, but it's very similar to adult pre-trial. We see them very, very rarely. But we can offer services and we have grant funding to pay for mental health and those kind of services for kids that are underinsured or uninsured. So that they hopefully can get the help and not end up in, in the criminal justice system as a whole. I talked briefly about case management. We actually have no kids in custody or on case management currently and haven't had in a long time. I just put it in there because we still get grant funding for it, even though we really have limited that we can do with it. We just don't put kids in custody anymore. Then juvenile community corrections is much like adult community corrections, although the case load is much smaller. I think our case load is 28 today, um, which is, our goal is to keep kids out of the system and, and deal with them at the pre-trial or the, or at the, um, or at the IP stage so that they're not adjudicated of a crime. And that is also prescribed in statute in terms of how long we can supervise them. We do a risk level, risk needs assessment. We do a risk YLS CMI, risk assessment, and determine what the needs are of the kid and the family and kind of work. We do a case plan and it's very prescribed. And, um, we also do some of the same evidence-based program decision points. And, um, I don't think we're doing smart recovery with kiddos, but we do individual therapy with like DECA, et cetera. And then we're doing what we call the project, parent project, parent project, which started last night at the community corrections office. We have parents, not just community corrections clients, but parents from all the community who need help with, with their difficult teenagers. And trying to help set boundaries and helping parents understand, um, the norms that they should look at. So we've, we've had really good success with that and I think we've had four or five classes so far. We usually do one every semester. And we put it out for the schools and we take referrals from the court, from schools, whoever is interested. Because lots of folks are struggling with teenagers that are difficult. Then we have our truancy prevention and diversion program that we do in collaboration, um, with communities, Center for Supportive Communities here in town. So we currently have 27 mentors that are volunteers that work with our truancy students. There are 37 students currently assigned to truancy supervision, eighth grade to kindergarten. And 11 are in the pending state waiting to be signed. And we've had 85 referrals since the school year started, which that's actually low. Last year we had 114 at this point of the year. So we've, we're, we're still working, the school district's had some turnover in management, leadership, and so there's been some confusion about how this is supposed to work. But we're working pretty steadily with them to get all that resolved. And we have a truancy multidisciplinary team. We meet every month and talk about difficult truancy cases and how can we support those students better? And that's with DCF, the two truancy organizations and the school district.
And when you refer to the school district, are you primarily referring to 497?
Primarily, um, we do have truancy students from Baldwin and Udora, but not as, not, not even close to the volume.
Okay, simply because you just have a higher volume at 497 or you just don't?
They just, a lot of the districts have other programs, especially smaller districts have more continuity in terms of their smaller, smaller number of kids. They know the kids personally versus, whereas in a big district, it's not the case as much.
Okay.
But we'll serve anybody and we've had kids in La Compton, we've had kids in Udora, we've had kids in Baldwin. I mean, any school district who wants us to help mentor, advocate for youth, we're happy to do it.
And on the truancy program, have you had any conversations with our new DA and their involvement with that truancy program?
I met with, we talked about it, yeah. And it, we were, I was kind of hopeful because our new ADA for juveniles is fantastic, but he's now moving to adult. We, we had him for less than a month.
They seem to rotate quickly, don't they? Yeah.
Yeah, so Dakota and I are going to have, planning to have some future conversations about it. And Mark Pruitt with, uh, the academy has reached out too, because we're having, we're talking about the truancy issues we're having with day school, how to address that. And I'm, I'm sure at some point we're going to want the court to talk to us, or at least the DA about what can we do? I think everybody's kind of struggling. Lastly, I just talked about grant funds. We get a lot of DOC grant money. We have a block grant for the juveniles. We have the adult community corrections grant, so the adult grant is 700,000, a little over 700,000. The juvenile block grant is, uh, over half a million. Well, then that includes graduate sanctions and then there's some truancy money and there's some Burt Nash money, so it's about almost 600,000. Then we have this behavioral health grant, that's about 100,000. And I think, then we have this reinvestment grant money, that's about $200,000. And we, that's what we pay Building Peace with, that's what we pay for mental health for under uninsured youth. We pay for some of our evidence-based programming with that money. So we've kind of used it to try and support kids in the community. And then we have the regional collaboration grant we do with Johnson County for the discovery program, um, where they provide stuff for both Johnson County kids. They, they provide the same program in Johnson County that they do in Douglas for the kiddos to get them more exposure to different educational backgrounds and, and, um, work opportunities. Like they do it all at Peaslee, actually, all the classwork is done at Peaslee. Things to watch, I talked about, um, we're working on the Northwest Professional Consortium on the completion of the process evaluation, which we'll be sharing with all of you when we know what that is. The Kansas legislature is currently in discussions about the consolidation or unification of all the probation functions of the state. That would be parole, court services and community corrections. This came up about 10 years ago and it didn't go anywhere. I don't anticipate it will this time either. I think that the state has no idea how much money is spent in community corrections beyond just what the state's spending. So I think it's just an affordability issue personally. I don't know how they'll ever get to, I don't think OJ is going to be willing to give up court services. I don't think Department of Corrections is going to be, it, I just think it's too complicated. They've tried it before, it didn't go anywhere, but I just want you to know in case you hear about it. The Department of Corrections is currently working on a funding formula for adult community corrections and then they will subsequently do one for juveniles. It's in the very early phases. Lee and Holly were kind enough to go to a meeting yesterday, which was wide debacle, because, um, the funding formula is, it's in statute, they're supposed to have one, they never have had one. And they're trying to develop one, well, there are winners and losers, thinking at least in the initial stuff. And people are pretty unhappy about it. But my feeling is that those who were winners, maybe they've been underfunded for a long time and they've been struggling. So it's kind of a, Douglas County, at least in all the forms I've seen so far, looks, we, we win, but that doesn't mean that's how it'll come out. So I, I, we'll keep you posted as we learn more. I think it's going to be in all your discussion. And, um, and, and I wanted to point out that Judge Henley is on the ad hoc committee on pre-trial and we'll be watching closely the work of that committee to see if there's any, um, anything that results from that committee's work that we need to adjust in our pre-trial program to meet the requirements that they put forth. Be really interested to see what they do because the state doesn't really mandate pre-trial currently, pre-trial supervision. Uh, there are not that many communities doing it. We're one of them, Johnson's one of them, I'm not sure who all, there's probably less than a handful. So it'll be interesting if they start mandating things.
The communities that aren't doing their pre-trial supervision, where are those people?
They're in jail.
Or they're, or they're on, they're out in the community without any sort of supervision on bond or on their own recognizance.
It was interesting, Holly and Lee went to the meeting yesterday and a lot of the community corrections directors and Holly can talk to it. We're talking about they never do departures in some jurisdictions. Literally don't do any departures. Well, we do lots of, it's almost a majority of our workload.
Douglas, the, the court system in Douglas County, when I'm sitting there listening, is, operates very differently than a lot of other places. I mean, uh, they talked about, you know, like their judges that don't do like graduated sanctions. You know, you go before the court, you violated, I'm going to revoke you. There's no intermediate steps to get you to come back into compliance. They don't do departures, uh, you know, you, you either did or you didn't, uh, send you so. Our court, their philosophy, they, they want to have people like, they want to keep people out of prison as much as they possibly can. And so we hardly ever revoke somebody. And by the time that somebody is revoked, uh, they've had not just a couple bites at the apple, they've mowed down most of the orchard. I mean, uh, they've, they've had, they've had a lot of chances to, they've had another, a lot of, a lot of chances to rectify their behavior.
Sometimes going to other meetings makes you appreciate where you are. Do you guys have other questions for us?
Yeah, any other questions, commissioners? We're reaching our five o'clock time, which is not a hard deadline, but is where we usually wrap up our meeting.
I have one question. Does the, uh, per diem you get from other counties cover the cost?
I would say no, but historically, nobody charges more than that. I mean, generally, I think there's only one agency that did. I think Shawnee County had that $300 per diem, then nobody would use.
Oh, I thought it was on. Sorry, that was my, yeah, I was just going to say, yeah, Shawnee County did bump theirs to 350. I feel like, uh, Finney County bumped theirs to 200. Ours is $150 a day. I believe the rest of them are around that as well.
Has been pretty much the standard for decades. Not necessarily that it's the right thing, it's just what it is.
Do we have an idea what the break even point is, what that cost ought to be?
So many things are intermeshed. It makes it complicated, like, like I said, JDC staff do so much more than just JDC and how do you equate, what value is the timeline? I think we do an amazing job keeping people out of trouble and hopefully providing them support. I mean, that's our goal really is to support the clients, it's not to catch them doing something wrong, it's to catch them doing something right. We have lots of incentives. We have food banks at every single location, so we can help people who are, have, you know, food needs. We have sleeping bags, we have can openers, we have all the things that you wouldn't think of, but need for folks who are unhoused or in need. So we have incentives and we have need cabinets, just for people who need something that continue to survive in the community. And the nice thing is, you, mayor may not know, you have barrier reduction funds that you, that you provide to the department every year. We use those heavily. Mostly deposits and months rent, we help with utilities. I think it's about 35,000, 35 or 40,000. We, we, we've set an arbitrary limit of $600 per client, but we oftentimes exceed, I mean, it's case by case. We've never said no. Because if it's going to keep somebody in the home or keep a kid in the home, we're going to do it. Because it's a lot less money than it would be if we hadn't care.
One of my favorite things is when you go to a juvenile detention center and you go into intake and assessment and you see the cabinets that you have full of things for, for kiddos. Because oftentimes there are kiddos that are coming there that don't have anything with them. So you might talk a little bit about everything from car seats to diapers to.
Full of car seats and we have to change those at every, often because they get old and we have diapers, we have clothing sizes, baby on up. We'll provide them meals and we'll do whatever we can to try and help, uh, get that, that kiddo where they need to be. We do all kinds of things, I mean, honestly. Fix cars, turn on water.
We've had clients in community corrections that they got a new job and, you know, they have to have certain tools or boots or whatever and they don't have those things. But, you know, and so we will buy them their boots or whatever clothes they need to start their job. So it's, it isn't limited to any specific thing. A lot of the rent we pay or, like when somebody goes to an Oxford house, uh, they have to pay like a move-in fee and, and they pay a certain amount of money a week. And if they're starting out, they don't have a job, then we'll pay their move-in fee in the first couple of weeks so that they can kind of have a bit of a cushion until they get their feet under, under them, so.
I presume you always spend all of your budget?
No, I'm very conservative. No, 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 I don't spend all my budget.
Okay, I thought with all this help, you would find use for all the money.
Well, I mean, we try and help people, but we're not going to get, no, I, I try and save where I can. I'm all about maintaining the building, maintaining the premises, making sure things work. My, my job is to make sure my staff have the tools, they need to do their job. And that's to support our clients to be successful. And so barrier reduction money is great, but we never exceed what you give us. And, um, and there are some costs that we can't, we don't know. We don't know what the electronic monitoring is going to be. We know what we did last year, we know what we did the year before, but we don't know what we're going to do this year. So a lot of the things we budget are estimates based on history. But not necessarily, not, and there is awkward as we can be, but I don't overspend my budget ever, never have.
When we do a barrier reduction, uh, request, there are sometimes, you know, we, we might fund something, but the officer's going to work really intensively with that person. So that, that's, we can sustain whatever it was going forward. You know, so whether that's working with them on a budget or helping them do something else, so it isn't just, you just keep pouring money after money. But, uh, helping them figure out how they're going to sustain that after we give you the leg up.
I think Commissioner Reed has, all right. Well, there's no other questions, commissioners. Thank you for being here. I, I will say, like, I'm always impressed at the number of programs that you're working on and the collaboration. You, you do nothing on your own, really. Everything is in collaboration with other entities. I truly enjoy reading your grants every time you write them to understand. And the data geek in me is always interested in seeing, you know, what's the success, what's our projections? And really appreciate all the work that you all do and thanks for giving us this great overview. Anything else, commissioners? All right, with that, we'll resume to our 5:30 business meeting.
Thank you.